Okay, uh, somebody by the name of Linda T. joining us via Zoom. Uh, could you please identify yourself? And you're muted right now. Okay. Good to go. All right, uh, welcome, everybody. It's actually six oh two. We'll call this public hearing to order. Before we get started, I just want to make it clear. We are here to, uh, for your input, uh, your comments on our proposed updates to the bylaws. The Planning Commission will not take any action at this hearing. Any action we take as a result of the comments received will be at our subsequent meeting, which starts at seven o'clock.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you just sign into the, uh, the sign in sheet up here, the two that just walked in? Please, thank you. I have to keep records.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next, I have recognition of visitors. And I'd like to start off, I think, uh, those of us on the Planning Commission should introduce ourselves. Uh, first of all, I'm Andy Holling. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'm Pat Cox, Sainsbury, new member.
David Donner, George Solm, yeah, Robert Miller.
And there is one more member, Mike Curtis, I think was going to try to, uh, join us via Zoom. So I'd like to go around the room and have you folks, uh, introduce yourselves. And I'd also like to know who is actually planning on commenting as opposed to just here, uh, to listen. And the reason I ask is I just need to have an idea of, uh, what we need to set for time limits. So, uh, and if you say now you're not planning on commenting and something comes up that you want to comment on later, feel free to do so. But I'm ju- I'm just trying to get a sense for how long I'm going to take. So let's start, uh, Christine.
James Solm, yeah.
The member of the.
This is kind of like.
Not coming.
That's. And I've made.
Okay.
Elsie Jerome, Vice Chair, D R B. Um, there, no. I think there's a, order.
Five, three percent of server, I might say something.
Good.
The hour, we're doing, I'm probably.
Okay. Okay.
And I just.
Okay.
June, can you help?
You may have a question, okay.
That's Andrew, it's probably a fox.
Okay.
Mike and Nancy, hold on, we need to.
Okay.
Mike now, I won't comment.
Okay.
I'm. Here.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. Oh, yeah, we have, well, just, uh, Kate, could you sign in for us, please? And, and, uh, and you plan on commenting or are you basically here to listen? Okay. Yep, fair enough. Great, thank you, everyone. So, uh, what we want to do, oh, in, uh, actually on Zoom, I see we have Chip Porter. Go ahead, Chip, uh, introduce yourself. And I know you're going to have comments.
Chip Porter.
And David.
Hi, Andy, it's David Eric, and I'm gonna have comments.
And there's Mike Curtis, the, uh, last member of the P C. Welcome, Mike.
He's muted.
You're muted, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, you're muted, Mike. Well, long as he can hear, yes. Okay, uh, Danny, if you want to put up the, uh, the report on the monitor. So my plan is, um, there's a report that we issued as part of these updates, which kind of summarizes everything we're proposing. Uh, and there's a, there's copies of it here, if anybody wants to grab one. Uh, my plan is to just kind of go through the report, the summary of items that we're planning to change. Uh, maybe a brief explanation as to why. Uh, but if there's any specific item that you want to get into more detail on, we can call up the, uh, the full batch of changes here. So, uh, give us a second here. Okay. Um, so just the explanation, real brief explanation. So, uh, as many of you are aware, we had a pretty significant, uh, round of updates that got finally approved in December of twenty twenty-three. That process went on for, I'm gonna guess, two years, maybe, by the time we got to that point. Once they got implemented, uh, early twenty-four, few members of the Planning Commission and the D R B got together and said, okay, we've got these new regulations. Let's give them a few months to play out, see if there's any tweaking that's required. So that's kind of where we are now. We've gotten feedback from the D R B, uh, we've gotten feedback from the Shoreland Subcommittee. Um, and I failed to have Danielle introduce herself.
Oh, I'm Danielle Turin. I am the zoning administrator and the Planning Commission clerk. And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but there's another person who's in the waiting room.
Okay.
His name is Tim Born.
Okay. So, uh, anyway, this has been a collaborative effort, and I want to thank the members of the D R B who are here. Uh, they were very instrumental in, uh, a lot of its updates. Uh, so that's kind of what got us to this point. So this, we go down to the, the summary of the updates, so, uh, I'll go through that. So the first item is in the reference materials, we, uh, add, did a bunch of additions, and it's mostly references to other permits that may be required besides the town zoning permit. And we just want to make sure people are aware that there are potentially a lot of different permits that they might have to obtain, depending on what they're trying to do. Uh, so that, is that any questions or comments on that item?
And where, where will that appear, Andy?
Uh, it'll be right up front, in the reference section, uh, of the development regulations. Uh, okay, then, sections one point three, two point three, three point one, seven point eight. Again, uh, just clarified references to state, especially to state permits that be, uh, may be required. And, uh, here we're especially concerned with shoreline permits, wetland permits, wastewater permits. So again, we've just tried to include references throughout our development regulations, um, to other permits that may be required. Uh, sections five point two, five point seven, seven point seven, and eleven, all have to do with driveways, uh, which ended up, uh, being an issue, uh, I guess, last year in the early this year. Uh, mostly, uh, having to do with minimum widths and setbacks. And one point on, uh, five, uh, table five point two, my mistake, the, the only change we're proposing for five point two is to add the driveway item. I inadvertently pulled the old, uh, table five point two from our previous regulations. That will be corrected before we, uh, turn this over to the select board. Uh, any questions or comments on driveways? Okay, six point four, uh, this was actually an item that D R B asked us to look at. Uh, should we allow planned unit developments or P U Ds in the shorelands district? Right now, our regulations only allow for them in the rural and village districts. And our, uh, I guess I'd call it a compromise. Uh, my understanding is there was a case that came up, uh, involving a lot that, that straddled both, uh, shoreline and rural districts. Uh, somebody who wanted to do a planned unit development was denied because a portion of their lot was in the shorelands district. So, uh, what we've put in there is if the majority of the lot, is it seventy-five percent of the lot minimum is in the rural district? And if any development within the shoreline district meets otherwise all the requirements of the shoreline district, then we would, uh, accept the planned unit development under those circumstances. Um, any questions on that? Okay?
Andy? Andy? Um, Chip Porter here.
Hey, Chip.
Um, I guess I, I'll reserve my comments on the shoreline district for later.
Thank you, yeah, you'll have your opportunity, Chip. If you want. Okay, uh, next item, six point five, that's really was all the D R B, uh, just trying to clarify, uh, the rules and submittals required for reviews. And I don't know if Delsey or Diana want to comment on, on any of that.
Just trying to make it easier for everybody to know what all steps are.
Right, and I think you folks did a great job of, uh, doing that. Uh, any questions on that item? Uh, sex.
Sorry, I'm noticing there's a discrepancy between what I have there and what I have here. Um, it looks like in the paperwork, section seven point eight and section eight point twelve are repeats.
Oh, okay.
So I apologize for.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. One of them shoreline protection, one of them shoreline stabilization, but one of them's not up here, seven point eight.
Oh, that didn't make it?
But it's on the paperwork.
On the paperwork.
Okay. Um, so, so, yeah, read, what was seven point eight?
Clarified language and permit references for shoreline protection as recommended by the Shoreland Subcommittee.
Okay, and again, that had to do with, uh, the first couple of items is, uh, making sure that, uh, we have references to state permits that may be required, especially on the shorelines. Thank you. Uh, section seven point nine, uh, basically remove the limitations for number of temporary signs. As, uh, a lot of you may be aware, there was an issue on signs, uh, during the last election cycle, so we tried to clarify that. Uh, any questions or comments on that item?
What was the right now?
For what?
Well, I got the impression a lot of people didn't like all the signs, and removing the limitation seems to be the wrong direction.
Uh, because, uh, as in most things, there are state rules that supersede our rules. And the state has very specific rules regarding election signs. Uh, they do not limit the number. So that, that was basically the reason. And we, and we didn't want the town of North Hero to be in a position of having to police that. So the point is, if somebody has an issue with political signs, again, there are strict rules, uh, with the state. And if, uh, somebody thinks, uh, a person is violating the state regulations, they're free to go to the state, make the complaint.
Andy, this is David.
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify that the state allows municipalities to, uh, create rules if they choose to do so.
Yes, understood.
Yeah, the, the other thing I would like.
Actually, we do have rules, I think, regarding the maximum size of the signs.
Yeah, and the other thing I would like the Planning Commission to consider would be to, uh, consider, uh, the length of time that, um, so, political signs are put up before an election. What we've seen in the past is some political signs have been put up for six months in advance of an election.
Yep. I hear you, and again, that is all governed by the state. So if so, and I think it's, I want to say it's two weeks before the election until immediately after election. I believe that's what the state rules are. But again, I don't want the town in the position of having to, uh, enforce, uh, something that's really a state requirement. Uh, thank you, Dave.
Andrew.
Yes.
That's fine, but if somebody puts one up two months in advance, is the town doing anything with that? Like, where?
I give, you're talking political signs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Put correct sign it in any way.
Yeah, I, I guess my answer would be if, uh, somebody had an issue with political signs that was in violation of the state regulations, I would give them a contact at the state to, uh, deal with it.
Given the time horizon, no, it's, it really seems impossible to go through the, the appeals process and to get an enforcement action and to get someone from the state to come here. And last time there were, there were signs, there were several problems. So it's one across the street, there was the million in the field.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it's not at local level, it's just not gonna happen. I mean, I just feel like we're just throwing up our hands and saying, okay, whatever.
But here's the other thing, I don't think, that free speech, right? And guidelines taxes owns on signs.
And his property.
It's his property.
Well, they're, the one across the street was too big, too close to the road. The ones, there, I think there's a limit.
We don't have size limits, we got, they're in there, you can, it's really, we put them in there. We put a size limit to signs.
And that, and the size of it.
Do you remember?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's thirty-two square feet.
Yeah, one, one.
Continue with it, but if you have a hundred little one, one foot signs, that's, that's one foot, that's not a hundred.
Right. Right.
We didn't put a limit to how many times.
No.
On the size, well, I think they could do it, but.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, okay, anything else on signs?
So, the zoning administrator oversee our signage, if we have all signage, should I businesses?
Yes.
So, is it this, the, when the zoning administrator still administer whatever signage policy there is?
Not when it comes to political signs. Again, that's the, the state, as far as I'm concerned. David is correct, there are certain rules we can make, but it's really, uh, the state that sets the rules for polit- political signs.
Why don't I answer to my business to the state?
So, good, there's two different scientists, there's temporary, there's permanent. So we have a permanent thing, and then with temporary though.
Yeah, we're just talking about temporary signs.
Well, I'm talking about temporary. So you do have that permit for, I'm gonna sign.
Yeah, I guess that's still, but the zoning administrator has managed that too.
She does, any, any sign in town other than political signs? And she, she has a say, some say over political signs in terms of size.
Yeah.
But any other sign falls under her jurisdiction, whether it's a business sign or, or whatever. She would issue the permit. Yes.
I'm not understanding why, if the guidelines say two weeks before an election and a short time after, why we wouldn't enforce that? Um, I understand people have a right to free speech, but when it's no longer relevant, it seems that they're cluttering the landscape and that there should be somebody to get those signs down.
Okay. Fair question, I would just say right now, the, uh, town really doesn't have the resources for that kind of enforcement. There's no budget line item for it. You know, we're trying to be conscious of our tax dollars as well.
I think enough people are concerned that maybe we should think about it. And then, you know, putting that into the budget next time, because it does detract from the beauty of North Hero, which is why most of us are here.
Sure, yeah, and you're, you're welcome to pursue that and present your plate, uh, case to the Planning Commission in the future. Be more than happy to take another look at it. Okay? Anything more on signs? Uh, okay, section eight point one two, clarified language and permit references for shoreline stabilization as recommended by the Shoreland Subcommittee. Again, that's, uh, really references to other permits that may be required. Any questions or comments on that? Uh, section eight point one seven, a new, uh, article requiring that seasonal to year-round conversion require a building permit. Uh, that's something that we did require in the past, uh, until the state took over, uh, wastewater enforcement, which I think is in two thousand and six or seven, something like that.
Seven.
Um, so our regulations went away. We decided to put that back in, uh, even though the town is not responsible for, uh, enforcing wastewater regulations. If we require, the state, uh, if somebody is gonna convert from seasonal to year-round, the state, uh, needs to get involved. They need to approve the wastewater system. By having that requirement in the town of North Hero, we can essentially have a box, you check that, yes, this person has, uh, gone to the state, got their proper approvals. So that, that's the reason for adding that item. Any questions or comments on that? And finally, section ten point four, there was a discrepancy or, uh, in, between section ten point two and ten point four. Uh, we just corrected that so that, uh, everything matches. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, great, so that, that's the, uh, that's the gist of what we're proposing. And I know there, uh, there has been quite a bit of discussion about things that we're not proposing to do right now. Uh, specifically, uh, shoreline setbacks, and I'm sure there will be some public comments on that. Um, so we're gonna now go to the public comment, uh, portion, so just a couple requests, let's all be respectful. We want just one person at a time. This is not a debate back and forth, this is an opportunity for anybody that wants to provide a comment. The Planning Commission is able to do that. It doesn't sound like a lot of you want to make comments. Uh, I just ask you to be concise and to the point. Um, I'm not gonna hold a stopwatch, but we'll all know if you're rambling on too long, so. Um, so, yeah, I, I won't set a time limit right now, other than, uh, just what seems reasonable. Um, so as anybody makes a comment, uh, members of the Planning Commission are free to ask a question or a clarification. And then we'll move on to the next person, and we'll just keep going till everybody's had a chance to, uh, offer comments. So I'll start right up front with Jeff.
I was hoping not to be first.
You picked the wrong seat, my friend.
Well, I couldn't see the screen back there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um, all right, well, I would like to have, uh, the setback for shorelands brought back in. I'm, I'm seeing, I've had for a couple reasons. One, I'm thinking development that I don't think could be happening. It, it just strikes me that there is just too many exceptions to the rule. I'm not comfortable delegating to the state.
Okay.
Whatever we think of the current governor, we don't know who the next governor's gonna be. Uh, I don't think we can react quickly enough if the state decide to stop enforcing rules. For me, what really threw me over the top was when the North Hero Health condos were approved.
Mm-hmm.
Because to me, they broke every rule. But they were granted an exception as an existing building, even though they were gonna tear down all the way to the foundation, have a different footprint, similar size, but different.
Yeah.
So actually, not one stick was gonna remain. And it's not near the lake, it's on the lake.
Understood.
And the sewage system was gonna be below the, the hundred and three foot, foot plane from two thousand and eleven.
Yep.
So to me, it was just an absolute, nowhere did that have been approved. And it was approved by the state. And I think that was before we weakened our local laws, I can't remember, but we need local control, with, because we, locally, we can see our neighbors, we know what's going on, so compliance is better, enforcement is better. Uh, we can, we can talk to each other civilly, we don't have to go through court and vote them off earlier, and it's just a much better way, democracy works at the local level. And these are difficult issues, and it's important for us to be able to talk locally about these issues. And I just don't think, I, I also think it's incredibly short-sighted to build a lake, a house closer to the lake.
Okay.
Lastly, I watched the, the November, uh, uh, video where you guys voted on this. And you implied, I think one of the reasons for that vote, I think, my impression was, because you, you said you can't even build a deck uh, within two hundred and fifty feet of the, of the lake, or within a hundred feet of the lake, if, if this goes for. And I just don't think, there are so many exceptions included for relating to non-conforming lots, grandfathered in. Um, I'm in, I'm in a house that's grandfathered in in a lot of ways, things are not completely, my property has three lots, which is utterly ridiculous. It's been reduced to one lot. Um, so I understand that local businesses have to have exceptions to some degree, but to say that we shouldn't have a seventy-foot or a hundred-foot setback because there are no exceptions, it's not true. There are, there are exceptions, and there will always be exceptions.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, I'll go over to Scott and.
Hey, Andy, this is David Eric. I, I wonder if I could actually present, I'm, I'm in Burlington at my cousin's one hundredth birthday party today.
Wow, that's a big deal, yeah, go ahead, David.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, and I apologize to everyone else in the room. Um, first, I want to be very clear that I'm speaking as an individual and not as a member of the D R B. And I also want to just take a minute and thank the P C for all of the hard work that they've done on these updates. Uh, I think this process has been incredibly transparent and very inclusive. And, uh, I think the P C has done a really great job of reaching out to other, uh, committees in the city and the town and, uh, have really been, uh, inclusive in this process. So I just want to really give kudos. Uh, I think that the proposed changes are well thought out, and they're, they're all together appropriate, and, uh, I really appreciate the work that everyone has done on that. Um, I, I would like to speak about the reinstatement of the shoreline setback. Uh, I think that, uh, it's really important that we do that, uh, for a couple of reasons. I think that the, the, uh, most important thing is, is that, is that, um, uh, the S P A, the Shoreline Protection Act, doesn't actually provide the same protections that a shoreline setback would, would, would make, uh, if we had that in our zoning regulations. And that's because the Shoreline Protection Act is really designed to, uh, control drainage. It's not designed to control housing density, which is what our zoning bylaws are for. And so, um, uh, they really are two different issues, apples and oranges. And the Shoreline Protection Act is designed to work with local zoning, it's not designed to replace local zoning. And so, uh, it's very, they're very clear about that. And, uh, there is no conflict between having a, a local zoning requirement in addition to the, uh, shoreline protection requirement. The, the other reason that I think is very important that we consider putting the shoreline protection back in is because, uh, there is really significant parts of North Hero that are, are actually suspended from the Shoreline Protection Act. The Shoreline Protection Act, uh, is suspended when there's a road at the shoreline. And, uh, about forty percent of North Hero has a road right at the shoreline, which means that, that we actually don't benefit from the Shoreline Protection Act in those, those properties. I think that's a significant missing, a significant gap, uh, in relying on the Shoreline Protection Act. Um, uh, the second thing is, is that, uh, while the Shoreline Protection Act does have a hundred-foot setback requirement, that really is for conforming lots, uh, which is going to be in our, in our community, that's gonna be new construction. There's very little new construction in our community, uh, on the shoreline, new, new. There's very little new construction in our community uh, on the shoreline, new new uh, uh, construction from scratch, right? Most of the construction, most of the things, most of the applications that we see in our town are for additions to existing construction. And when there is existing construction and on a nonconforming lot, uh, the the setback of a hundred feet is not absolute, it is exceptioned. And in uh, the state, when they exception it, they go through this permitting process where they actually ask, you know, what kind of drainage are you going to have? Again, the key criteria here is is to try to resist runoff from going into the lake. And it is not a density uh, consideration. You know, it's not a density requirement. Um, so uh, having uh, reinstating our shoreline setback is is not duplicative of the state. It's actually complementing the state and and helping our town in in a very different way. And I think that 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 Jeff's comment uh, about uh, ceding that authority to the state is really important. Um, because uh, we, if if we don't have a shoreline setback, then we don't, we don't have any local control over that. We actually cede those decisions to the state. And at the state, they're making those decisions based on on drainage. So uh, so for those reasons, I think we should reinstate the shoreline setback.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, Scott.
Yep, um, so I'm all for local control too. I'm a local control guy. Um, my thing is. More about a- after, after projects are completed. Okay, we have the zoning administrator. I assume that I assume that you go out and give a certificate of occupancy, am I right? So. The state will give somebody a permit to do something. But you you're not involved with seeing that they haven't made any compliance with state issues. Am I right or am I wrong?
Uh, for like a building permit?
Yeah.
Like for a new building?
Yeah.
A principal structure, I would require all the permit information from the state. Or correspondence from them saying that no permit was required. I I require that from everyone before I issue a permit.
Sure, I understand. And let's say a permit is issued, but that 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 person in their construction is not in conformity with that permit. Do you do you deny certificate of occupancy? Or you just say that's the state's business and I'm the town's business?
The certificate of occupancy only applies to the local building permit that I issue.
So this is a problem that I see. For myself, I've had issues with neighbors. Who are not in compliance with their state permit. They aren't in compliance with uh, with your open permit. The state does not come out to check and see if they're in compliance unless somebody makes complaint. If you make complaint to the state, you have to say who you are. And then your neighbor hates you because you're like saying, hey, you didn't do it right. So and it it can get worse. A neighbor could not do it right. And then all of a sudden, it's an Airbnb, right? And it's not like a private residence. And then it's got much more use than it would have had if it was a private residence. So my whole thing is to get. Rather than the town saying that's the state business, the state saying that's a town business. I'd like to see both parties be conjoined. That might have.
We're doing our best to make that happen, Scott. In fact, we've gotten the comment from the uh. Person that's in charge of shoreline permitting for this part of the state that says North Hero does a better job than any other municipality. As far as coordinating with that. Thank, we need to move on. I appreciate that, though.
I'm in favor of reinstating the setback because I think that we really do need the local control. Particularly when it comes to density of development. So I think that's really important that we not. Hand that over to the state when in fact the state is only looking at drainage and not at density of development.
Thank you.
Diana, Delsey.
Andy, when you're ready, I can talk.
You ready to go, Chip? Yeah, let's uh, yeah, make, keep it to the point.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd like to address three issues tonight. The first.
Uh, as long as they have to do with our updates, I'm happy to hear. If they don't have anything, we'll do that at a different time.
I'd like you to restore their bylaws to conform with the town plan. I'd like to restore two longstanding bylaws. And I'd like to request information as to how the planning commission is, shall address testimony. The town plan matters. Bylaws need to conform with the town plan. Our town plan has always called for open lands. The town plan has always contained state regulation elements.
We're not here to talk about.
Discrimination of housing. And in two thousand twenty-three, two laws were basically removed from the goal. And the seventy-five foot setback should be reinstated.
Okay.
Seventy-five foot setback from the lake was not only basic to the goal of open lands, but it offers protection of the shore and the lake. This has been in our zoning since nineteen seventy-two. And since nineteen seventy-two, a number of exceptions have allowed, been allowed. But the basic seventy-five foot setback has always been kept. And the seventy-five foot setback provides the standard for and required for those setback except, exceptions. There's no redundancy. There is no comparable shoreline protection standard except for undeveloped land. And the shoreline's protection is concerned for runoff. There is no shoreline's protection for our goal of open lands. Shoreland protection specifically requires that applicants adhere to town zoning. Furthermore, the planned unit development in the shoreline should be reinstated in its entirety. This one zoning district was inadvertently eliminated in two thousand ten. And at that time, a planned unit development and a planned residential development were merged. Um, and when the town merged them, they omitted the shoreline district from the new bylaw. Planned unit developments allow the town to achieve planning goals, which include affordable housing and open lands. Why would North Hero want to deny the town the ability to achieve planning goals? Why would the town of North Hero want to discriminate against development in one district? I'd also like to say that the testimony received by the planning commission must be delivered deliberated. I submitted testimony on these two issues in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. In two thousand twenty-four, I met with you, Andy, and we agreed that the elimination of the seventy-five foot step, setback was a mistake. We also talked about the issue of the PUD and agreed it was a minor but important change. The planning commission is required to review and deliberate test testimony. My comments tonight are brief. If additional information is required for deliberation, I'll provide it. Furthermore, if my testimony as well as that from others is to be changed, challenged, amended. Due process requires that I be a party at that hearing, which would. Quote, from the agenda, make changes as is necessary to the update. Therefore, I request that the planning commission meetings, which addresses these two issues, be specific items on the warned agenda. And though, although it's not required, I request that I be sent copies of the agendas. To summarize, please restore bylaws to conform to the town plan. State law requires bylaws to agree with the town plan goals. The goals to preserve open lands and housing were achieved with two bylaws. Removal of those bylaws creates a violation of state law by the town because bylaws are not consistent with the town plan. And the mandatory nondiscrimination. Second, please restore two longstanding bylaws. The seventy-five foot setback from the lake preserved open space by the lake as well as protecting the lake. That buffer was essential to the town plan for open spaces as well as protection of the lake. Removing the seventy-five foot setback eliminates open space and puts in nonconformance of the town plan. A planned new development allows the town to achieve open lands and affordable housing. A PUD in the shoreline district uh, was implemented uh, was. Eliminated with a new bylaw. Failing to include the shoreline district in the PUD, the bylaw now prevents the town from achieving open spaces and housing goals. And creates a violation of the law. Third, I request that the requirements for the open meeting to ensure due process be kept. Testimony given to the planning mission requires deliberation. If deliberation involves new testimony, due process requires notice as is required by the statute. If previous testimony is not completed because of improper due notice, due process is denied and in violation of the statutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip. Just one clarification to a point uh, he made. We did talk about the seventy-five foot setback. I agreed that we should probably take another look at it. We did in the planning commission. We addressed it last November, so. Uh, that's where that stands. Otherwise, you you got off the point a lot, Chip, but fair enough.
What was your reason for not reinstating it when you reconsidered it?
Uh, I'll summarize it, but let's get people's comments. I I will address that before we're done. I wanna hear what other folks have to say.
Okay. So. When I heard about the idea that, you know, we should perhaps put back a setback that existed before. I kinda wondered why did it exist in the first place? And that took me as shipped it, but a little differently back to the reason you would have those only regulation, which is to reinforce the town plan. And what I looked at was the language around character of the community. And feeling that uh, perhaps this was contributing to what we thought was the character of North Hero versus other communities. And it seems that that regulation was in effect for almost fifty years. So without a whole lot of arguments, so I would guess that it was successful in contributing to the character of our community. Uh, and then there was a, I guess, a a feeling that the state regulations covered it, so we didn't have to have it. It was duplicative. But looking at what the state said about that, they said, no, there are gaps or gaps. And uh, David mentioned one of them, one that is really existing, it kind of goes out the window. There was also uh, in the state gentleman's uh, assessment, the fact that nonconforming lots. All they would do, if the foot footprint is the same size as, you could just apply for, what do they go on the rake? I forgot their word for it, but just a, you know, a a stamp, you know, and you can go ahead. And if it was larger, you can apply for a permit. Well, that permit applied to nothing but the drainage on the property. Nothing to do with where the building is located uh, visa vis the shoreline. And in fact, I guess, absent that, you could build within twenty-five feet of the turtle. And the same thing for nonconforming. So I understand that there are gaps. And my understanding is that having this in place is paramount and important to a character.
Thank you. Tina? No. Okay, let's uh, go to the, this person in between rows, I guess, with the flag. Okay, uh, let's go to the back row, uh, left. Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, go ahead, sir.
As the impairment, the falling into the lake, right, two. Fall under the. So the shoreline stabilization.
That, that, could you repeat that? I didn't catch the first part.
The route two is falling into the lake.
Oh, okay. Uh, yes, I would say it does. Um, you know, I, Tom, I think Tom might be uh, familiar with what, where you're talking about. And there is some activity going in the, ongoing in that regard.
So if that was to be the best, um, so if there were any shoreline stabilization. That would go to the state. It's a little more complex than those in the mountains.
Yeah.
Uh, the state and then the town with it, not even potentially a private property, if somebody owns that property. But generally, the shoreline stabilization fall under, under the state. Yes. And we think of instead.
No. Yeah, I guess we we ready for the back row now?
I guess I'll come back to what the proper always saying is it would be interesting to know why.
Thank you. Tom, you got anything for other?
I I have some questions, but I'll just finish up with everybody, which is.
Okay. Well, Lori?
I I'm a seasonal uh. Person and it's been here since nineteen sixty-three. Uh, I mean, I basically grew up in North Hero in the summers. I really appreciate the, the, the. The control that North Hero has, then continue. And I just wanna make sure that you maintain the certain amount of sovereignty over the total threat. Um, I had to go in front of the D R P a couple of years ago for for putting a debt in a nonconforming lot. Majority of the lots on the shore, uh, shore, lots of point. And I had to deal with the local issue and I had to move back twice to to the, when they gave me a conditional priority. But I did it. It was a ten by twenty foot debt. And unfortunately, it's a little small. The cedar that I used on it was really, was rotted uh, after ten, twelve years. And I I called the town and I found out that I had to call the estate. And I communicated with the state. It was a big hassle. I would rather have to go in front of the D R P. I think it's in the, it's in the interest of local, local control.
Thank you. No. Okay, I think we have been through everybody's time. You said you had the.
Yeah, just a couple of things to clarify. So the shoreline subcommittee should review the bylaws specifically. Uh, the shoreline protection. Um, and I mean, one thing I'll say, D E C would agree that I I think there's some things they would like to improve within the hundred foot zone. But it's, it's a lot more complicated when you really dig into the regulations than, oh, we just sent something very many to you with this. And various things. So it is much more complex. And if you've had discussions with Visha, the state permitting, you you can start to appreciate those stuff. And so when we were going through the recommendations, I mean, we did consider the resource available. The ability of the state to enforce, the ability of the town. And I I've heard it around the room. And I think as an example, if we're going to um, change the setback. There are a lot of things I think the shoreline subcommittee would review differently if we had discussion of enforcement. And, you know, how are we, but we went through basically appreciating what we had available. Um, both in the state and local. If there's a discussion on, you know, expanding the resource available. You know, then I think, yes, you do have discussions of setback and potentially other areas. But until that discussion happens, and that's not the, the subject of of this meeting. It it's hard to really, it's hard to really sit there and say, hey, let's, let's just change the setback. If if we can have the discussion of enforcement and resources, but towards protection, there are a lot of things that I think everybody should. Besides just a setback.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, I'll just summarize because I've been on, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so um, because I think it's really important that uh, we hear from you. And and we've had a bit of a pattern on a number of people talking about the setback. And I wanted, because we have some uh, members of the DRB here, I'm very interested in their input. Into the setback discussion and rationales they had a vote on. Into the setback discussion and rationale as they had a vote on it. The unanimous unanimous unanimously voted. To uh establish a setback and acquire, I believe that, I don't know when that was, but it was fairly recent. And we got that input uh on the planning commission. And the subcommittee also did the same thing unanimously. So is there any, would would you be willing to share a little bit the thinking behind your rationale behind? That uh vote.
So on behalf of the D R B, um there's a lot of members here are speaking without their D R B hats on. I think it's fair to say that if you ask each member of the D R B why they voted. That way, it, there are different reasons. I mean, out of the seven votes, I think there were six or seven people there at that time. There are probably five different reasons about why they voted that way. Um, so I. I think as individual citizens, you've heard where some of them coming from. Um, but I think for several of us on the D R B, it was a question of. Trying to be as concise and clear as possible. Um. Uh, knowing that also the state can be difficult to deal with, but we. For them to get back to people, we hear that a lot. You know, having the weight and weight, but our whole purpose is to try and make everything consistent and clear. Um, and fair. And so uh I I think a lot of the effort that we have is is. The fulfillment.
I actually, because the meeting was in November. So I didn't remember all the details, but I actually listened, and I think we talked about this issue for twelve, fifteen minutes or so. And um a couple of the members that weighed in on kind of. As the discussion happened and started moving toward reinstatement, you could see the vote, we're gonna take a vote, but. Move toward reinstatement. And where the members sort of um. From the last round was agreeing that the D R B should weigh in with the planning commission on reinstatement. So that we had concrete standards to apply when cases come up for us. And um people felt that that statement is very. Well stated and much appreciated, and that consistency is what we struggle with. And um. That's a really big deal. Consistency when we make decisions, that will be specific regulations. We like to say we make decisions because five point two tells us to do this, but it's not always that easy. Um.
Thank you. Anybody else um? Then I have been on record as saying that I feel. That that a seventy-five foot setback would be in conflict with the shoreline protection act. Uh, so my problem wasn't so much whether we should have a setback. Just felt seventy-five foot was the wrong setback. And let me, let me just give you an example. So I buy a a shoreline lot in North Hero. And I want to build a house on it. And just normal house, you know, say sixty by forty, twenty four hundred square feet. So I look at the regulations. Well, how, you know, I want to put as close to the lake as I can. How close can I put it? Oh, seventy-five foot. Okay, I'm gonna go build my sixty-foot wide house. Uh seventy-five feet from the lake. Fair enough. So you you meet our regulations. Oh, by the way, you've got to go, since you're in the uh shoreline's protection area governed by the state. You've got to get a permit from them. So you go to the state and say, well, I've got my local permit. I want to build a house. And uh, you know, seventy-five feet from the shore. What do you think? Well, how much? And you know, we talked about drainage. It's really creation of impervious surfaces. Well, how much impervious surface are you going to build within a hundred feet of the shoreline? Oh, well, sixty feet, fifteen hundred square feet. I'll guarantee you the state's not going to agree with that. They are very restrictive and I, you know, there there are exceptions that. But they are very restrictive as to what happens in the first one hundred feet from the shoreline. That's why I felt that the seventy-five foot setback was in conflict with the shoreline protection act. And that that's me speaking.
That's just like, I don't remember your name back there. Yeah, you, wait, I wanted to get a permit because you want to increase the size of your deck in the shoreline. But I'm not from the law. I don't think no matter what we put in our bylaws, we can forever not. It has to go through the state no matter what.
If if you're rebuilding within an existing.
No, I want that too. Because I wanted to add on. Right. I want anything. If it's an inch, you will have to go to the state.
That's not true. Sorry, I'm I'm.
How do you say it's not true?
Well, so um Susan Binsky, like front owner, but also Realtor for thirteen years. There is a point in the shoreline where you, if you're only adding a small square footage. You just have to notify them. It's not a permitting process. Expand out, then you have to ask. Right, but you just have to notify them.
It's a registration process. Nope, they generally approve all of.
Yeah, I think I think that's probably the the, I think to Andy's point, if the state's at a hundred and the town's at seventy-five. I I think you're going to run into some some conflicts there. And so it should. Probably be closer to what the state is. And um. You know, I think it, I I think it may, the shoreline to me, and I realize I've taken multiple state accredited courses on it. Being a Realtor, but there are forums online that walk you through the exact permitting process and give you. Maps and diagrams and it it's pretty easy to walk through it. It's not very confusing. So I think if you, you know, maybe if we made those assets more available and they were printed. At the town and when somebody comes in for a permit, that might be, make the process easier because not everybody is super internet deaf. Has printers up here. And you follow on her point, that's why the D R B um. In consideration, in considering like, should we reinstate A and B? If so, what should we do? Go back to the seventy-five? And we um had that conversation and said, let's recommend a hundred. So that the state can be a hundred on drainage and we can be a hundred on zoning and construction.
That certainly is a plausible solution.
Because we thought that that would be simpler for applicants.
And we were told that we have to be, it's either a hundred or a hundred and twenty feet from the center line of the road.
I mean, we have setbacks from the road. Yes, depending on uh. What the structure is. Had to do with what, excuse me?
That it was a rule with the road going between the lake and the early were the resident building. It had to be, it was over a hundred.
I guess I'd need more specifics. And in this point, if if there is a road uh near the lake. Uh, anything on the non-lake side of that road is not covered by the shoreline protection act. That's clear, even if that road's fifty feet from the lake.
But it depends on the road too.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's a public road. Private roads, that doesn't apply.
But the state and town do have a setback required.
I would refer you to table five point two in our development regulations that spells out all of the required setbacks. Anything else? Very well, thanks, everybody. We had uh very good input, a lot of things to think about. So just quick uh timeline, uh what happens next? Uh, so at our meeting, which technically is starting about right now, our next regular planning commission meeting. We will address the comments that have come up at this hearing. Uh, we will decide what, if any, actions to take as a result of these comments. Um, the next step is for, once the planning commission finalizes our recommendations, we submit it to the select board. And the process kind of starts all over. Once we uh turn it over to the select board, which I'm hoping is going to be pretty quickly, maybe as soon as their uh next meeting on August fourth. Um, they uh they have certain requirements they have to meet. Firstly, they have, they have to have at least one public hearing. So there's going to be at least one more public hearing on it uh. On the subject, no less than fifteen days. There are more than a hundred and twenty days. Uh, from when they receive the submittal from the planning commission. Uh, they have the option to make changes. Um, uh but if they do make changes, it has to be more than fourteen days before their final public hearing. And also if they make changes, they come back to the planning commission and say, you've got to update your report to reflect our changes. Uh, we went through that uh on the last round. They uh. They can adopt or reject these changes ba- based on a majority vote of the select board. Uh, if they do accept the uh the changes and approve them, uh they become effective twenty-one days later. Uh, they do have the option of putting it out to vote should they decide. And I guess the final thing, if if uh this amendment is not approved or rejected within one year of the P C final hearing. Which is tonight, so mark the date on your calendars, uh it shall be considered disapproved. So that's the next steps after the planning commission finishes up. Um, so I guess, you know, if you're, whatever we end up doing in the planning commission, if you're not happy, you've got another shot at it with the select board. Um, if you're not happy with what they do, uh anybody has the option of uh submitting a petition. Signed by at least five percent of the voters, um which would force it to go out to vote. And then ultimately, uh, you know, you have the choice in the ballot box. We are all elected. The select board is all elected. If you don't like what we're doing, elect somebody else, so. Um, so on that note, um, I will uh call the uh. The end of this meeting and and again, I appreciate everybody's input. Thank you.